And I would entertain.
Chairman.
Let me know when you're back on.
For live again, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're out of our executive at 2:15. There is a motion.
We make, you want to motion to have the.
Approve the letter written by our legal counsel.
Approve the letter that's written by our deputy prosecuting attorney to the city of McCall in response to their request of last week's letter. I'm not sure what the date of that is, but.
I'll second.
I moved in second to authorize the letter to McCall City from our prosecuting attorney and us involved. I'm assuming that will be on next week for signatures. But we'll need to make that an action item next week. Hey, moved in second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, Oak. Hard work. Next agenda item is an action item. These are FAA recommendations from our PNC director, Sinda.
Well, I need an add in here also, please.
And I'm sure that Scott Horns is probably sitting out there too for Lake Shore, so. Well, thanks, Oak. Come on up to the front, Annette. Good to see you again.
Yeah.
Sinda, I'll turn it over to you or Annette, whoever's leading the discussion.
Annette and I had a conversation with Joe Viera with the FAA out of Montana and then the airport manager that worked with ITD Aeronautics. Also present was one of the ITD planners, or FAA planners, and then airport manager Emily from the city of McCall Airport. The question that we posed to the FAA and ITD Aeronautics was, when is the Form 7460-1 required? When is it not required? And so they just presented and talked us through that. There was confusion in ITD, there was confusion here. This is something that just recently came up into our attention. They've adopted the airport, Idaho Airport land use guidelines. There are things in here and.
Is this the FAA that did this?
This is ITD. It's ITD right here. They have new airport manager down there also. This is Idaho Transportation Department.
It's a guy named Dan Connors.
Nope, this was a lady. She knew. I didn't get her name. So we asked, when is the 7460-1 needed? Who approves it? When's it approved? Where can you get assistance to fill out the form? When do you need permits when you're just doing a remodel? At what point the building permit process? Do we need this information? And then who is required to do it? The distance from the airport. So we originally thought it would be like threesome miles from McCall and then some distance from the Cascade Airport. After talking to the FAA, he said anything within five miles of a runway.
Five miles, huh?
Five miles. Needs to fill out a form. So here's, and then I'll show you the form here in a moment. So what happens if we don't comply? They don't have the authority to impose it. ITD doesn't have the authority to impose it. We are the ones that impose it. And if we don't impose it, it could affect money given to the airport from the FAA through ITD and their future grants. With that being said, what we're doing is we're trying to get your direction in a policy with a future ordinance that will impose these requirements.
Oh, just because I want to get it straight in my head, five miles, that would put you out about like where north of the lake, North Beach?
Yes.
All those homes from there south would have to follow this form.
Annette's over in West Mountain.
West Mountain.
Will encompass all of Carefree.
What about Donley's Airport?
It's two miles from there. Yeah, it's not very far from there. It's.
You got a map anywhere with that circle on it?
We do not. We would have to either create that or if we are going to adopt an ordinance, I would just recommend that we say anything within the valley floor. So we aren't having to go out and say, okay, now is that five miles or not? Because if you're over that five miles, you're most likely not going to require the 7460-1. We'll find that out here in a minute, as soon as I figure it.
They said also it takes months for the approval.
Forty-five days.
They talked to them, they were still in 2020. The way to. To approve a 7460-1, they're having people wait for two?
Yeah, and that would put, that would mean they have to wait for their building.
Oh, that's nuts.
We couldn't issue a building permit until we had this.
They already got waiting.
Well, I guess obvious the question is, Sinda. What are the, what's a risk to us if we don't do it?
Funding.
Airport funding.
Airport funding.
They get a whole bunch of money.
Absolutely.
What they run on.
You can't run an airport without FAA funding.
But they just got 10 million in McCall without this being done.
Cascade gets a ton of money also.
But without this being in place.
Well, it could affect it. They're not going to say it's going to affect it. It has the potential to affect it. They're not going to come right out and, you know, say anything like that. So let's see if we were going to comply and make everybody that builds a structure, you know, in the valley floor comply with this.
Now, this is only new buildings.
No, remodels too, if there's a change in height or outer structure. It doesn't include interior remodeling.
Okay, but just any exterior remodeling or new buildings?
Change in height or outer structure.
Right. So that eliminates the large, I mean, the first thing scary is, oh my goodness, how many people are going to do that? You have about 200 applications this year, so you got basically those 200 applicants. What you're saying though, is if we require them to do it, they probably can't build it next year.
Depends on how long they, if they have to get it, get that.
If they have to get it.
Right. So I'm going to show you the tool.
Okay.
This is what we're thinking. If the policy is that we're going to do this, you could go to this notice criteria tool. This is on the FAA website. You fill in the latitude and the longitude. Cheater number, where'd my cheater number go? Oh, well, I'll just.
You want mine, Sinda?
I got it. Thank you. This is what we would have to do to see if they need it.
Hold it, yeah.
We have to figure.
Go to Google Earth and find the.
Or else we could have GIS. Create our own tool. Then if the height of the structure is 35, remember where this was. And you just click submit. And you do not exceed the notice criteria. So you don't have to fill out one.
Yeah, okay. That part's simple.
Right. So then we would complete one of these for each building permit or have the landlord complete one and submit it with every building permit. But if it does require the 7460-1, it's going to tell you there in the results that you have to complete the 7460-1. And then you have to submit. Yes, it has the potential to slow it down. But if people are planning for their structures. Where I just went.
Where did you say?
They have to complete this form. Directions under the form. It's a sent to Texas. And they determine if it's going to, if there's going to be an obstruction. Do you want a copy?
No, not really.
So.
But what we risk is the airports losing their funding, which means they probably won't expand.
Or improve or upgrade. I mean, the taxiway just had to be rebuilt, that's $10 million. So you gotta.
So from your point of view, just how risky is this from a standpoint of just the people are already out there with applications or coming in? I mean, is it?
Nobody knows about it yet, so.
Yeah, I mean, they deserve.
There are going to be some mad people. I kind of envision it, and we've talked and if somebody applies for a building permit, everybody in our office should be able to fill out one of those.
Yeah.
Notice criteria tools, this one. If we have our GIS professional repair layer force, because when I go to Google Earth, it's questionable. I mean, we can find it, but you have to convert the meters to feet. And I don't necessarily trust it, because when you click on the lake, it's a lot higher than my place or, I mean, it doesn't match with my flight plane information.
There's inaccuracy.
The inaccuracies of the Google Earth elevation meters. But you can get an app on your phone that you can go out and you get your elevation.
I think if we do this, it needs to be like effective January 1, where it's in the middle of the winter. Nobody's waiting for concrete on site that day. And we give them plenty of time and lots of education to say, this is going to be the process moving forward. Got to do this, put it in the paper, put it on social media, and really inform people.
So as soon as this gets on the street, that subdivision just south of the airport, they're going to get it built.
Well, they have to do it. They have to do it anyway.
They have to do it anyway, yeah.
Yeah, they already have to, okay. What did you use to require it with? What did you use to require them to do it?
The request from ITD Airport Manager and the Airport Engineer. Request, well, mostly ITD Aeronautics. They wanted 7460-1 on each building site. They wanted soundproofing. And they wanted elevations determined, oh, and aviation. And we required all of that, so.
I like your idea.
I think we just, you know, I think we have to do it. I think we're over a barrel. I mean, you pretty much have, you know, we cannot lose federal funding for our airports. That would just be.
So we just set a date.
Set a date and we educate the heck out of it.
But here's my thought is, we can fill out this tool. They can give us an elevation. Or we can even use the Google Earth to start with. But anything that's even close to that airport, I think we should make sure.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
There's a big house going out, Franklin.
Talking about each end of the runway.
Yeah, anything in that conical sphere.
Five miles, you're talking.
It's not, not around the circle.
I don't know how you could do it sideways, because this would encompass the whole valley floor.
I think that we should just do this form on every building permit. Otherwise, we're going to be going, is that one in or is that one out?
Right.
Yeah.
I agree.
This is going to take a lot more time to determine whether or not it's in that overlay to fill that out.
Do the cities have to do this, like McCall City from north of the airport? Are they going to do it?
I'm pretty sure McCall is doing this now.
They're already doing it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if Cascade is. I haven't talked to them.
I know there's going to be issues. For instance, if it was my, my house, we'd put my stuff in. The trees are taller than the buildings, so I still got to have one. Yeah.
I assume a deed one.
I have to have one, but the trees are.
The airport's down here and she's up on the hill.
But I wonder if it's not, the end run of this whole thing is to get it to where the people know that they live near an airport and they're going to have to deal with the noise and the sound and all that stuff. And they can't sue for noise or they can't.
Yeah.
The airport's not liable for any kind of impact to them. They just know it.
The 7460-1 is for obstructions to airports.
So you, like this development south of there, you could go in and impose height limits, right? Now, you have now.
But yeah, I mean, they can't grow trees on it, I guess. So, but pre-existing structures, yeah, you're going to go ahead and make people take down their trees? That's just crazy, because we would literally lose every tree on the valley floor pretty much.
I think it depends on what that height is above the base of the airport.
Or we could look at, at the mileage. I mean, we'll, we'll, we can look at both ways and see how much of the valley floor is taken.
Yeah, it's mapped.
Because they say five miles within, not at the end of the runway.
Took clear around the whole.
So, and what about flat pattern?
That would take in all of Boise City. I mean, you think about, that's, that's thousands of homes. They're going to have to fill this out and wait months to get it. This is going to blow up.
And I think that there's a lot of people talking about this around the state of Idaho.
Let's hope so.
Yes. But yeah, because the 7460-1 is notice of proposed construction or alteration. And it's for height obstructions.
June and Meg, we're pretty far behind. I don't know if that impacts you or not, but.
So.
So are you guys writing an ordinance?
Yeah, we can do that. But do you want us to, can we talk to the GIS specialist and ask her to?
Well, that's, that's what I was going to bring up. I think we need to talk with Karen, see if we can contract a third to set up these zones on a good, reliable GIS map so that you guys will kind of know. But I have a hard time going out sideways. I just think that's crazy.
They say it's five miles from the airports. I mean.
That's got to be a big circle.
Change the distance.
Yeah, just do a, just do a GIS map that takes that cone in with whatever's required.
So anything within five nautical air miles.
Doesn't say from the end of the runway zone, just.
Maybe just draw a circle then.
I mean, we can look for better definition in here. Draw a circle and then she can change the tool that will show us the latitude and longitude. And maybe she can find a better way to do the elevation.
Yeah.
And I think the way that we have it structured with Jeremy is you reach out to Jeremy and he reaches out to Karen.
We can talk to her about that and then we'll start writing the ordinance. Anything that we think might be an issue, we'll definitely make sure they go through this. Franklin Building Supply and some that are pretty close. Want us to start immediately or?
All the ones that River's Edge or Phil's Development, all those will have to go through it. So there's, I think there was some three-story stuff being, wanting to be built there, wasn't it?
Two-story.
Two-story?
Over two-story.
So that may impact what's going to be built there, right?
Oh, man.
We're going to kiss on this one.
We're not in charge of them.
No, I understand that, but.
So do you want an action? Do you want a motion that in, during the temporary window where there is no ordinance in place, that we begin enacting these immediately? Or I don't know.
Well, it just kind of sounded like you guys are already starting them at the south of the airport, but.
We're looking for, need to direct us to do that.
I think we need something to start right away.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve that our Planning and Zoning and Building Department, I don't know which one of you guys are going to do it, but draft an ordinance surrounding the Form 7460-1 for Valley County. But in the meantime, begin immediate action to fill out this form on all building permits that are coming in. Fill out the form and.
Use the best information we have.
Yeah. Sinda, before we second that. You go in, you fill out the form and they tell you, okay, you're in an airport zone. You can't go this high. Or you have to sign something that's going to give the airport a waiver that if a plane crashes into your house, it's not our problem or.
Give us a copy of it. I'll show you what it says.
I mean, what's the, the physical impact?
It's just acknowledgement that you could get hit by an airplane.
Instead of saying you do not exceed notice criteria.
Your structure will.
Going to say, exceed the following notice criteria and you have to fill out the 7460-1.
Yep.
And I'm wondering if we don't get this information out to all the architects right away? So that they understand that if they have a height, that there will, may be a height restriction in the area that they're building? So that they can, first of all, acknowledge that with their clients, let them know it might take longer. And maybe the client chooses to take it down a bit, not make it so high.
There's probably nobody, hardly anybody in that five mile zone that a height restriction would be restrictive. Unless somebody decides to build a, you know, a communication tower right off the side of the, you know.
That's only 35 feet.
I know, but.
That's the.
But I put 6,000 elevation.
Yeah.
Most of the structures down to Heinrich require it. And beyond. I'll tell you, Carefree is within the five miles. Do the process. And I mean, we'll all become schooled in how to quickly do this.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second? Second. Move to the second. Any more just kind of?
It's harder and harder.
This is going to be one that's going to come back and bite, but.
Yeah, and then one of the other things on the whole thing is, we do an average height on buildings. Everyone needs to know the maximum height of them.
Okay, we got a motion, second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ooh boy, more work.
Yeah, it just, yeah, it just keeps getting worse and worse. I mean, it's like the requirements. No living California.
So keep your ears open to see if anything's changing at the state.
Yeah.
Because it's the FAA funding that is distributed by the state. The state's key.
Okay, our next agenda item is an action item. This is a discussion decision regarding Lake Shore Disposal request to increase solid wage and commercial rate adjustment CPI to 8.6. Scott, come on up.
Good afternoon, commissioners. How are we today?
Just a peachy keen or Reno.
Yeah? Don't stress out too much about the airport. So we are.
It's easy for you to say, Scott.
I know, it's really easy. But I think I'm within five miles. I don't have a very tall tree though, and I'll cut it down.
You're too tall. You have to duck your head.
So yes, Lake Shore Disposal is requesting an 8.6% increase in our, what we have with our current rate. We're talking with Doug and Oak. We've, there was some verbiage within the contract that stated in the Exhibit E, the rates have a built-in 3% automatically going through the year. There's a separate increase there of up to CPI or whichever is lower, 5%. So at this moment, what we are, CPI is 9.1 right now, but we're working off of 8.6. Yes, we're requesting 8.6, but in just speaking with, with Oak, it sounds like if we want the extra 0.6%, I need to bring in, you know, we know that our fuel costs have gone up. We, we, our labor has gone up. We, we just did a wage adjustment last week. Our guys are starting at $30 an hour now. We've done a 41% wage increase over the last 19 months. So from where we were to where we are today. So we are, yeah, it's a lot. It's, it's a pretty big number there. So I think from where we're at now, the, the 5%, correct me if I'm wrong, but the 5%, we can have with no proof of, of expenditure. But if we want anything above that, we would need to bring in fuel receipts and, and, you know, maybe some other costs that, that we're seeing out there to justify the extra 0.6%.
So you're saying the 3% you get automatically every year is part of this 8.6%?
Yes.
So what you're asking for is another 5% for the CPI and trying to decide whether to come in and ask for the, with all the information to get the 0.6?
Correct.
So would you be satisfied with the point, with the 5% plus the 3%?
And be at 8%?
Be at 8%. Or do you want to postpone this and wait and you gather the information to come back?
I'm going to say we're okay at the 8%. I, I, I just don't see where the. We'll look at it next year.
And Scott, it's been a long time since you came in for a CPI increase, hasn't it?
So we went two full years without a CPI increase, so I believe that you guys, to follow the contract, I need to bring the things in. It's up to the commissioners whether or not they want to see that stuff. But just from our point of view, that we are, we're putting expense out there to, to provide the service to the, well, the whole county and all the cities and everything else, so.
Well, this is on the bills that go to the consumer or this is on our contract for the MRF?
So this is on every, like a blanket across everything. So it will affect the recycle center, transfer station, the, the processing and the hauling of the material. And it will affect the consumer who subscribes to our service.
Ryan, you got your, your end up?
I had some observations. So there's, so there's three, there's really three methods for changing the rate that we have agreed to under the contract. Scott mentioned Exhibit E in the contract. That is a table that we have broken down. The fees and the adjustments that will be made on an annual basis and it's in the contract. So it is going to go up every year. So I was confused and I think it's confusing when Lake Shore comes in and says we want an 8% increase when 3% of that 8 is already in the contract. So we've already agreed that cost of doing business is going to go up on average 3% every year, and that's laid out in the table. Then there are two price adjustments that can be made mid-contract. One is the Consumer Price Index. That's an inflationary scale that when we're in a situation like we're in now, where inflation is just going up and up and up, they can ask for a 5%, a maximum 5% adjustment just based on the Consumer Price Index. If it's gone up, but it's capped at 5. And according to the contract, they can't ask for any more than 5. So if their costs have gone up more than 5%, they need to, they need to come in and show you what, what their costs are. Fuel receipts, increase in wage adjustments, things like that. Then you can make the decision whether or not you want to approve or reject that. But they have to, they have to, they have to show it. The CPI, really, we just have to make, we just have to check the CPI and make sure that the Consumer Price Index is greater than 5%. And then that's, that's all the extra work they have to do is come in and ask. So that's, that's how we should be making adjustments under the contract.
So next year if CPI, suddenly the market crashes, it goes to 1%?
So, yeah, so.
They come back next year and say, now we're going to take it back to that?
Exactly. So if, yes, if the Consumer Price Index drops below 5%, then there can be an adjustment according, according to that as well. But here's, so here's the thing, if I understand this correctly. All Lake Shore is asking for is a 5.6% increase, because the 3% is already captured in the contract, so it's 5.6. And so you can, pursuant to the terms of the contract, approve up to 5% and then you can decide how you want to handle that extra 0.6. If you want some additional information from Lake Shore for costs going up, or if you want to take the word for it, that, you know, that's up to you on, on how you handle that. We all know fuel prices are, are historically probably the highest that we've seen in. We all know fuel prices are, are historically probably the highest that we've seen in, in quite some time and, you know, stuff like that. So I think they could probably easily produce the receipts. It's just a matter of procedure, how you want to handle that.
I would appreciate it if we could get the point six. So if you wanted me to bring some documentation back, I'm more than happy to do that, but.
You want to table it?
It's entirely up to you guys.
Well.
I think at this point, you know, because I'm thinking about it, at nine point one percent is where it's at now. We're sticking with the eight point six because that's what it was when we started this discussion, right? So we're not gonna be looking to, oh, it's nine point one now, we gotta get that or before October first, we want ten percent. If it's up to ten, we're not gonna do that. So basically it's a, you know, yes, it's point six above what we're contractually able to ask for without documentation.
One of the things I think I heard mentioned is you didn't, you haven't raised this in two or three years.
Yes, we put a freeze on the rate, on the CPI increases over the last twenty and twenty-one.
Yeah, usually it's been around one point nine to two point one, something like that.
Yeah, so the last one we did was either one seven or one nine. And so when COVID hit, we decided to, everybody just kind of threw their hands up and went, we don't know what's going on, so here's what we're gonna do. We're not gonna ask for a CPI increase for two years. We did that with not only Valley County, but the city of Cascade, city of Donley, city of McCall, Riggins, Adams County. We did that with everybody. So this is our first year coming back. I wish that, I mean, everybody wishes that the, you know, we are, I wish I was asking for one point seven, but it's not where we're at.
Wish we were paying one point seven.
Right.
Yeah, based on what I've heard there with having those low ones for two, three years and then coming in and staying realistically under the nine. It just seems to me like it's a reasonable request.
It is a reasonable request, but the way the contract is written, the most we can give him is five. If he wants more up to nine or whatever that, another half of, you know, point nine or points, whatever it is, you're gonna have to provide the documentation, come back in and ask for that.
Okay.
That works for me and then it's transparent and everybody knows what's going on.
Would our motion be to approve the three percent?
No, the three percent is automatic in the contract.
You have to come in and ask for that three percent or you automatically get?
Technically, no. So anything over, and maybe I'm.
It's in a table.
Yeah, anything over three I have to come in.
Exhibit E and see what the twenty twenty-three rates are gonna be and twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
You can certainly give him the five.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move forward and approve an increase for Lake Shore Disposal at five percent as per contract rate adjustment.
Have a second?
I just want to make sure I understand this. So when you say eight, five percent, then what you're doing is basically not agreeing to the eight point six or the five percent in this case.
What they've done is they've added the automatic three percent they get every year.
I understand that.
To the five percent, which the contract says the most we can do is five percent. The CPI is higher than that, so if he wants more, he's got to come back in with documentation to show that.
But we could approve up to the five percent or up to the eight.
No, we don't approve the three percent. That's automatic in the contract. Okay. It's an automatic increase. We've been dealing with that since they started. So we're just approving the five percent.
Once more than that, you come back with a separate argument. Is that what you're asking?
Or you could be nice to him and just pass the, the five point six percent today and move on.
That's what I'm inclined to do.
You know what?
Well, he's, Sherry said they can't or they can?
Per contract without the supporting documentation.
Procedure, the procedure that's anticipated in the contract is that you can give a Consumer Price Index adjustment of up to five percent just as it follows the CPI without any additional documentation from the contractor. If there is additional cost that they're asking for, which they are, in this case, point six percent could be more, the contract anticipates that they would bring to you some documentation or some proof that their costs have gone up from over, from this time this year over last year. And, and that can be whatever you want it to be. That can be fuel receipts, employment agreements where adjustments have been made, or whatever costs that you want to analyze beforehand. But you do have the discretion to.
Trust them.
Just do it without, yeah, it's up to you to decide what documentation you want, if at all.
And I'm totally fine with either way. I'll bring you guys.
It's not that you don't have the option. You do. You can go back. If, if CPI is nine point one, I would get your information here and come back and ask for.
Yeah, but we're not gonna do that.
I know, it's a lot of work.
Well, no, it's not the work. It's, I mean, I still gotta get the same information, right? It's just we're trying to be good stewards of the county and good, keep our relationship good and solid.
Six percent, we'd be basically asking you for more work. We know it's out there because we all, all know the economy. You know, at least have a pretty good idea of what's happening with it. And I, you know, I'm just trying to avoid extra steps if we can, so get to the same point. That makes sense?
Yeah, it's, Sherry would probably have to amend her motion if you want to give them the point six.
How do we do that? It's in contract. If we break the contract, we've broken the contract.
Is that correct?
We have that flexibility to go higher than five percent.
But only if he proves it through documentation.
No, or we could take his word for it.
Yeah. We have the option to take.
I'm uncomfortable with that motion. You guys can do whatever you choose to do. I'm not gonna break a contract, especially one this important.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think, really vote your conscience. This is a procedural issue that really is, is what's gonna make you the most comfortable in making rate adjustments. The, there's language in the contract that it doesn't have to be interpreted so rigid that if we don't require exact strict enforcement, that that constitutes a breach. But I think what you're grappling with is, is more the procedural mechanism of let's follow the spirit of the, spirit of the agreement and, and, you know, rate adjustments are rate adjustments. These are gonna be imposed not only on the county, but also on the customers of Lake Shore that have and, and you're their, you're their spokesperson for, you know, how, how those costs are gonna go up, so. I don't have really any, any legal recommendation for you. This is more a matter of policy for you to, to decide what you're most comfortable with.
Well, and then we got to keep in mind today that we got notified that our medical insurance went up nine percent.
Yeah, I'm cheaper than medical at this point.
I would be very happy.
Five percent.
I would be very happy with five point six.
Yeah, that's what I, I just don't want to have to drag this out any more than necessary to get to the same point, you know.
Well, did you pull your motion?
Make the motion then, yeah. I didn't get a second, so.
Oh, we need a new motion. I'll make the motion that we authorize a commercial rate adjustment CIP of five point six percent to Lake Shore for the next season.
And I'll second it.
Move to the second. Any more discussion? Hate paying for trash, but it is what it is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, our next agenda item, we're only half an hour late, is a discussion for potential changes to DMV. June, Megan, come on up. You sent us some information on that, but I hope I can find it. And that was, that was very good, Megan. I appreciated all that. I did look at it, but now I don't know where it is. It's because I'm in the room.
So we just, we only wanted to meet with you to update you. We are down to one employee in the McCall DMV. She is doing appointments only. I did run an ad in the newspaper. And it is going to run again this week. The first one was color. One this week will be black and white. Mackenzie has had it on social media. It's been on Facebook. It's been posted. I did get an email from Angela right before we came up here. There are still quite a few people coming into the DMV not realizing that it is appointments only. She has had to turn some folks away. We do have very large signs up there. I took two signs up last week that were probably about two feet by three feet to hang up. So we're doing everything that we can. If we decide to fill that position up there, we will not have anybody for at least two to three months. First, we would have to find somebody to hire. And secondly, it would take a good solid two months to train them, to get them up there. Angela could train, but Meg is training right now and she's by herself and Meg is, it's very difficult to be by yourself trying to help the customers and train at the same time. So we are not here requesting a decision. There is not an action item. We are here only to bring this to your attention for discussion. And if you wish to pursue it further, then we can get on the agenda at a later date. I have talked with the bank. We do have a lease with the bank. That will be up the end of September and we start our new lease in October. Anna has been more than generous and helpful. She said the bank will do anything and everything they can to help us. We have a ninety day clause in our lease and she said they will not hold us to that whoever works for the DMV. So options are to continue as is and then Meg will give you some information. Or we could consider moving the DMV from the bank to the annex. Or we can consider closing the DMV down up there and bringing our one remaining employee down to Cascade. So Meg has some information that she can go through with you to give you numbers since ITD has taken on a lot of the transactions. They are going to be taking part of our admin fees starting in October first. Our admin fees are eight dollars and twenty-five cents for transactions. Those fees I increased about two years ago to fund our DMV by code. Those admin fees are to fund the DMV, not the taxpayers. So Meg will share some information with you now.
Before you do, Meg, could you kind of explain what's the long term for DMVs? Is the state gonna take all of it over? Is that?
Well, that's what Meg can explain to you.
Okay, then go for it, Meg.
So right now, they're definitely starting with our mail and renewals and our internet renewals. They've also begun doing these QR code renewals, so giving customers more options. Up until January of this year, all of those transactions were run through the office and those transactions were the bulk of where we received our funding for the offices to keep those open. I've been tracking twenty-two against nineteen. I'm thinking of that as our most normal year to compare to. It's also the year I have the best data to compare against. Overall, we're down about an average of fifty percent in our in-office visits and the transactions that we're processing in office. So that's a pretty significant hit to the revenue and the ability to fund the offices. So we're seeing that there are a lot more customers who are renewing online. They are using, using the QR code and even more who are using mail renewal. I think they've been pushed that way with COVID to not come into the offices to utilize these other methods of, of accomplishing their renewals. So we are seeing a lot of them going that way and we have definitely felt that in the office. Obviously, summer is our peak season. We have a lot of customers, June and July. That has started to taper off the rest of the year. We have had a lot of downtime, a lot of slow time between customers. From January to about May, I was helping the front office because I was trying to stay busy. And I had these, this time to make these reports, which I would not have had time if we'd had mail and internet to process, so. That's what you have in front of you. This document is showing the decrease in county transactions, the increase in the online and QR options, and the increase in mail renewals going to the state, so.
So Megan, if you buy a new car or truck or motorcycle or boat, can you do that through the state or do you have to do that in your local?
If you make a purchase through an Idaho dealer, there is now an option for you to go online and you can transfer your registration from another vehicle to that new purchase or you can purchase brand new registration online. And ITD has also been attempting to roll out, it was supposed to go into effect in January. There are third parties in Idaho who are, who are now authorized to work with the dealerships in order to provide those customers with their registration. So that will also be another avenue that bypasses DMV.
The folks you're seeing coming in with new purchase stuff are the folks without computers?
Yeah, or there, or there's just a general awareness that that is not available. They have, they don't know that that option is even there. So I think there's a poor communication. It's still pretty new. It's only been around for a year. And we've seen it pick up more and more over the last year, but it's still, it's still new. There's a lack of awareness about it.
Can you tell me how much funding we have lost, the eight dollar part, since this started?
So I've done an estimate. It's sort of the, the data that I have to go on is not perfect, but I've estimated that for twenty-two, the, the admin fees that will go through ITD and that they, we are getting reimbursed for those at this point, but that is going away. That's gonna be about fifty-eight thousand dollars, almost fifty-nine thousand dollars. So in twenty-twenty, the actual admin fees that we took in were a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. In twenty-one, we saw that come down to a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. As of July fourteenth, our year-to-date was eighty-three thousand dollars. And that eighty-three included fifteen thousand dollars that for mail and renewals that will be going away. So that admin fee is about fifty percent, which is what's tracking with the transactions we're seeing in office.
Kind of sounds to me like we can't afford to keep it open.
This is really difficult for me.
I hate to do that because we need to service the folks up then in the valley. It's why we started it years ago, but if you're losing your funding, you're losing your funding.
It's not only that, but it's also, there's a lack of consistency with that office. There are people, customers are complaining about the difficulty of getting in. It's hard when one clerk is out and you have one clerk manning the office. It goes a lot slower. I've had a lot of complaints and a lot of McCall customers have been coming down since COVID because we have been open for walk-ins. And generally, the Cascade office has been more fully staffed and available. So we've had a lot of people from McCall.
Are you getting any complaints from people not able to do it online though? So they just come in because I can't do it online?
Like once a year in there. That's been part of the transition to our new system. People with trusts or people who are second homeowners, sometimes those records do not come over complete. And so they do have to come into DMV for us to fix that, or they could also call us. There's absolutely no transaction that cannot be completed online or through the mail. It's easier for some of those more complex ownership transfers to come in.
Seems like it's a good, good time, good timing to look at that downsizing.
It does. The writing is definitely on the wall with the financial side of it.
And aren't they going to be, ITD keeping more of our admin fees in another year?
Yes, so right now, right now, ITD is reimbursing us for internet renewals, the QR code renewals and the mail renewals. After October first, we're no longer gonna be receiving any of the admin fees for our online transactions. And then October first of next year, we'll no longer receive reimbursements for the mail renewals. So it's this, they've been preparing us for this cutoff.
So this conversation's been ongoing now for two years at the county commissioner meetings. And some of the small rural communities, I mean, these are important jobs in those communities. They made commitments that they were gonna keep, you know, people in offices. And obviously, all's are doing starviness to death financially, so.
The communication we got from them was that they were not concerned about keeping jobs or offices open.
I'm sure, because they've been so friendly through this whole process. This is really hard for me because I do represent the counties from the north and McCall. And we are asking people with gas prices at five dollars a gallon to drive down here to do this work and turn around and have to drive home.
They could do it online or in the mail now.
Yeah, that's.
Or they could call.
So what is, so what is, there's one or two things they can't do online. What were those? I mean, you have to physically inspect something.
Yeah, so there are a couple, so there, there have been inspections required in certain situations. That is something long, like. That is something like local law enforcement could do if they're unable to move that vehicle and bring it to DMV. That's an option. There is technically nothing that cannot be done in office. It could all be accomplished through the mail. So, for our customers who are unable to come in, there would be workarounds for that. If that is too great of a burden, we can definitely work with them through the distance. It's a little more labor, you know, consuming, but it does, it's possible.
So, June, are you thinking if we close the McCall office, you could bring that person down here?
Absolutely.
And do they live down here or do they live in McCall?
She lives in Donley.
Donley.
We would not be letting any staff go.
No.
And I think it would be important if we're gonna do this to work with the local libraries because a lot of your disadvantaged are those that don't have a computer to start with.
They usually have a cellphone. Most everybody seems to have a phone. Well, this is not an action item. We cannot make a decision today, but I think the writing's on the wall. They're probably by the end of the budget year will be mostly down that office.
Bring us your preferred alternative.
I don't think it would do any good to move it to the annex because it's.
That's just gonna be another huge cost.
Same issue in a different building.
Yes.
Okay.
So, if you want us to be on a later agenda for a formal decision?
Yes, please.
One week, two weeks?
It's up to you guys whenever you, you can fit it in with Doug or Gabby. And Megan, could you send me another one of those electronic? I have it, but I don't know where it is.
Yep, I can definitely do that.
Okay, thanks.
And we will really need a date certain and a lot of education.
Right, and as I said, Anna has been beyond wonderful to work with. The bank up there.
Meg's been great, yeah.
They're wonderful. So, the sooner we can make a decision, I can let the bank know too. And we also have to let ITD know so they can get that equipment.
Okay. So, get back on in a couple of weeks and we'll do the hard one. Okay, thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is not an action item. This is a presentation on a proposal for glass recycling. Joey, come on up, man, you're on.
You guys have been hanging out a lot. Is this like what? Social.
If I could, please, kind of, this isn't exactly a presentation. What I'm doing is making a request for someone more knowledgeable than me to make a presentation. Okay, what I'm trying to, what I'm requesting for is a glass pulverizer. And I'm looking to save the county money with the possibility of making the county money by pulverizing glass into sand, which has multiple marketable benefits to it. So, the pulverized sand with this equipment can make sand for golf courses. It could, if you want, it could make cullet, which is the product that you'd use to remake new glass, okay? The lady that manufactures these things, they open it up to the community and she sells five gallon buckets of sand for five dollars a bucket. And she says they do pretty good with that. In any case, there's multiple, multiple uses for this. So, what I'm, my ask is to do a Zoom call with this woman sometime in the future. And what was recommended to me by Commissioner Allen was possibly a Monday afternoon at 2:00 PM, which works great for Ms. Andella. And she would be happy to give a presentation. You could ask her any questions. Another person that is very interested in this concept is Meredith Todd, who is the Assistant City Planner in McCall. She likes this idea. Also, Jeff McFadden is curious about it because he told me their glass experiment with the road was not very good. This is a different animal. This sand could be reduced down to a size where you could do sand blasting with and you could sell that item. My son buys sand for sand blasting. I think he buys fifty-pound bags for twenty dollars a bag. So, there's multiple uses. I think I counted like twenty different uses for it, for sand, for pulverized sand. And what they have is a screen and you could set your, you just replace the screen for different gauges of sand. Steve Clements, I talked to Steve Clements and he was on McCall Planning and Zoning. He said, "The only roads you can't use glass for are federal highway projects." He said, "Other than that, this could be used as aggregate for concrete for many." So, it could be purposed for many things. So, my research has told me that Hayden and Stein distributors sell fifty thousand bottles a month out of McCall. I average a bottle to be, a beer bottle weighs about half to three-quarters of a pound. A wine bottle's about a pound and a quarter. You could round it out to one pound per bottle, so to speak, okay? At fifty thousand bottles, that's twenty-five tons a month. Twenty-five tons a month at this point going to the landfill. I'm not sure what the cost of that is, but I would imagine it's very high. So, Mr. Carnes could probably address that better than I, but in any case. So, for the mini, for this mini mill, and do you have, do you have any information? I see emails, okay. So, it's twenty-eight thousand dollars. I don't know that that, that was, oh, that was two-twenty pricing that I have before me. And this is where Ms. Andella could answer questions about what the current cost is and shipping, et cetera, et cetera, and housing for the, for the piece of equipment that would be purchased. She's so helpful. I mean, she's got, she's got numbers on everything. I think Lake Shalan utilizes their equipment. And there's a beach community in Florida that had a celebration. They had an anniversary party for their darn machine because it was such a, it was such an asset to their community. So, what I'm looking at here is an asset to the community. We're saving on the mining of sand, which is huge. According to Annette Spicker, the cost of sand is going up dramatically. And so, and we're reducing the carbon emissions in the transport of it if we keep it in kind of a closed-loop system, so to speak. So, it's in McCall, it stays in the McCall area, it's utilized on golf courses, trails. It could be used for bedding, for pipes, for propane tanks, for whatever. There's multiple uses. And the county could have that at its, at its disposal, literally, you know, for whatever they want to use it for. And, you know, of course, it could provide the job. And so, the rate, you know, you see pounds per hour on, before you possibly, and like fifteen hundred pounds per hour. That's, that's a pretty good amount of glass going in there. So, you know, I think it's worth looking into and to kind of get the details from Cindy Andella. And I think it could be a really good thing. I know New Meadows already has a system that's still implemented, even, not necessarily implemented, but they still use that, that clear glass, green glass, brown glass. And people still observe that rule, even though it's just going to the landfill anyway. It's just, it became part of them. It might take an education process. And according to Lindsay Harris, there might be grant money available to purchase one of these pieces of equipment. And so, you know, and, and to me, you're doing the right thing because the mining of beaches is going on. And when you take sand from a beach or wherever it's coming from, mother, mother nature puts it some, you know, takes the sand that you took it from and gets it from someplace else and puts it there. So, and we're talking about ocean beaches, et cetera. Oh, well, it even happens on beaches here. And the sand is good for beaches around the lakes as well. I mean, it's definitely a usable, marketable item if the county is interested in selling sand. So, I just thought I'd throw it out there just to be with my green brain, kind of hoping to do the right thing for the planet because it's near and dear to us. There's not much of it left, you know, that's green anymore. It's all going somewhere.
Joey, how big of a building does this require?
Well, the one, well, there's a picture.
Did you see this? Depends on what size of machine you get.
Yeah, it depends, yes.
I know, Joey, when years ago, we used to recycle, maybe Scott, you could help me out here, but the issue that we had was people wouldn't take the labels off.
This takes the labels off, it takes the corks off, it cleans the bottles, it separates.
The machine does?
Yeah, it separates the debris from the glass itself. That's part of the process. It does it all.
It screens it off, okay?
Yep.
And then uses air on the paper.
Yep.
Scott, do you know how much we used to get? Do you remember any of those?
I don't remember any of those, those numbers, no. I believe that program was coming to an end about the time I got here in sixteen.
I know we, they crushed it, but it wasn't crushed fine enough. And we used it on some of the roads and the roads came apart.
Yeah, there was a lot of contamination due to the labels.
The labels.
And just the quality of material that we were getting in at the locations. There was a lot of, according to Jeff, there was not just the labels, but there was actual trash.
Yeah.
Mixed in with some, you know, garbage, like the problems that we had. The whole reason we moved to Lake Fork, right? Those problems are, that's what was there. But now, we're not there.
Yeah.
So, I, I'm sorry, is it Joe?
Joey.
He called me earlier today and we kind of discussed a little bit in regards of the tonnage going down and what have you. Fifty thousand pounds would, say, a month?
I said, yeah, twenty-five tons per month comes out of twenty, twenty tons a month in beer and wine bottles. Okay, if you figure in a pound, a pound per bottle, that's what Hayden and Stein sell just in beer and wine. Now, if you start talking about liquor bottles, now we're talking at least a pound and a half per liquor bottle because they use thicker glass. David Carey's very interested in this whole thing because he puts out a lot of glass from the Bistro and Rupert's and Doug Mountain. So, he's quite interested in this. That doesn't count. That doesn't even touch the amount of clear glass or colored glass from the supermarket. So, we have pasta, we have salsa, we have dip, we have everything.
Well, then, windows?
Windows now, okay, some windows can be good, can be, absolutely. But there are windows like windshields that have coatings on them, not necessarily, not so. They do have pulverizers that do that, but we're looking at, you know, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars for that piece of equipment, okay? So, my thought was possibly McCall is where the majority, the bulk of this comes from. And I think, you know, and I discussed a little bit with Commissioner Allen about size. I think that mini would be too small even for McCall, you know? But when you look at the time involved, it, you know, it does fifteen hundred pounds in an hour. That's amazing, you know, really.
Well, then, there's a GPE O-five L that does one to two tons per hour. I'm guessing that's probably more than, there's a three to five ton per hour.
Yeah.
And this is basically just a hammer mill with a rotating screen. And then you could blow air through it and blows all the light stuff out. And then you would probably need an auger system to stockpile it. And it would need a building. And the building is probably the most expensive part right now. You can't do this outside.
Yeah. Well, you know, and she might have, she might have figures on that as well because she's pretty, she's on top of it. So, I'm just looking for consideration just to look at her time, you know, get her time and evaluate it to see if it's a worthwhile thing to do for the future.
Well, we used to have that weight of how much glass we contributed every year, but like you said, that was almost ten years ago now. So, I don't know what we do, but I'm sure it's more.
I do have a solution for the intern we discussed earlier today. Doug had asked me at the last meeting about glass and maybe getting some information. So, I reached out Pro Recycling. We actually do have an outlet. They have to be put in totes.
Scott, sorry, would you mind coming to the mic?
I'm supposed to say that. Can't hear you, come up.
Sorry. So, Pro Recycling can provide us with totes. The boxes are twelve dollars a piece, the pallets are five. So, we're looking at seventeen dollars. They hold about fifteen hundred pounds of glass each. It would then go into the trailers that we haul the plastic and the paper on. So, the transportation, there's no cost there for that part of it to get it down the hill. It's already what we do. It would go to the same facility that makes the insulation and they'll make glass insulation out of it, fiberglass insulation.
Does it have to be delabeled and washed and all that?
It doesn't have, because they're using, I'm guessing, I don't know all the particulars, but I'm guessing they use the same type of mission, probably in a very large fashion, probably in your three-hundred thousand, four-hundred thousand dollar fashion. But kind of what I explained earlier today was, let's see where our weight is because I can promise that fifty thousand pounds is not going through the transfer station ever. It's just not going that way. We don't get a whole bunch of glass. Where it goes, I don't know, but we don't get a lot of it on the floor. We get some, but it would not be fifty thousand pounds worth.
We could put an extra bin out at the recycling center and capture it and see what kind of volume we have?
So, here's our only problem there. Not a problem.
Challenge.
Challenge.
You have to go with a solution if you bring up a challenge.
Yes, so I have it. You gotta put a roof over the recycle center because these are, right, exactly. So, what did you say, don't go there?
I said, we're going there.
Oh, right. And so, once that is there, these cardboard boxes could be under that. But if we put it out there with the weather, they're just gonna fall apart. I asked him if we could get the boxes back and he said that they get destroyed. By the time they unload everything, they're just mangled messes. We wouldn't be able to put it into, say, a container like we're using and go dump it on the floor because we can all know what's gonna happen with glass when we dump it on the floor. Now, our plastic and our cardboard, as we pick things up, is gonna get contaminated, right? But if we had a separate place, that when that pallet's full, we pick it up, we go put it on the trailer and we're done with it. Like I said, there is going to be a cost. The return is five dollars a ton. So, for every seventeen dollars you spend on a container, there's going to be four dollars in return because it's gonna be fifteen to seventeen hundred pounds of glass, not quite a ton. So, there is a little bit of return on it. I personally think if we tried this, everyone would be more educated. The commissioners would be able to make a more educated decision on whether or not we're producing enough glass to afford a thirty thousand dollar machine in a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollar building, right? But I think it's important to know those facts. We just can't get there until we put the process. We just can't get there until we put the process in place.
Scott, I guess you're suggesting that it might be a good idea to try it on the smaller level.
Correct. See where we're at.
And yes, it's a progressive move.
Exactly. See where we're at.
That would give us time too to get a roof up, which is hopefully gonna happen by fall of next year.
Yeah.
Over the whole recycle center. And that's about a five to six hundred thousand dollar roof right now, just so everybody knows.
And that's the thing is.
We can keep it dry and then we could, we could start collecting it then.
Yeah.
I'd like to say, you do not have to keep it dry.
No, the boxes.
The box, okay, let me say, okay, let me go back here. If anybody's been to New Meadows to bring their glass, Ed, you probably have been. You've seen their containers. So what they have for their containers are a four by four by four box, a half quart box. It is steel, okay? They are made with flanges for a forklift, okay? So you could slide a forklift in and they dump the glass. Those containers, hold on to your hats, cost, I gotta get this right, but I got this word from Barb Dixon or from, and who got it from Mike Paradas.
Paradas, okay.
Yep. These, these containers that they make are seventy-two dollars. I was floored. I was like seventy-two dollars. You know, so they don't, they don't get destroyed by rain, okay? The glass can be outside if you need dry sand, then you have to cover dry sand.
But the problem with having those steel containers is that's not the way that the recyclers are gonna.
Well, I'm not, see, this recycle, your way is not what I'm addressing. I'm addressing the other ways, okay? I have no idea that existed. What I'm here to request is a presentation from Cindy Andella, who manufactures these things and could give you more specific answers to any of the questions that you have, as well as the marketability of glass, be it dry or wet or clean or dirty. That's what I'm asking for today.
But just to kind of recap just a little bit, Joey, you're talking about all these different uses for glass. And Scott's bringing us another option.
Sure.
And that's a, that's a thing that I think is important, that we don't just suck into one little, you know, vein on it.
Sure.
But I really appreciate that.
Let me do the numbers, okay? Scott says he gets five dollars a ton for transporting it to Salt Lake City. What I'm saying is you get one of these pieces of equipment, you get five dollars a five gallon bucket. So do the, do the math on that.
You gotta handle it too.
You have to handle it both ways, basically, both ways. You know, it needs to be handled. Look, and I'm just saying, let's look into it. There's somebody probably more knowledgeable than me within, with the West Central Mountain Development Council Committee. Yeah. That, that might be able to look into this because I'm sure they're better at it than I am. I mean, to be honest with you, Andrew Metzer was the one that got me into this. He said, "Joey, I'm putting you on glass." And I kind of ran with it. You know, only Andrew's gone. And, you know, I, I come across Cindy Andella because a couple of years ago, when the recycle was still there and there was a lot of buzz about recycling, moving and this and that. I said, "Well, I gotta get on glass because I can't do much about plastic plastics."
So let's, let's get back then to your request.
Yes, thank you.
Do we, are we gonna move, are we willing to move forward with a presentation?
I'm willing to listen to anything. I think it's a timing issue.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we could put this piece of equipment, if the county were to invest this type of piece of equipment, it would need to be inside of a building and set it up correctly. Because if not, I mean, it's gonna be out in the, in the open air. And we have a building planned in the next two to three years.
Well, this building, I mean, this piece of equipment, gosh, I had it. It's, the footprint is only four feet by, of the piece of equipment. The smallest one is four feet by seventy-two inches by, what, I gotta bring it up again.
The problem is, is that we don't have anything available right now to do anything. You've got to have a place for people to come into, put their glass into a bin, you know. We, it's gonna be at least one employee, if not two, in order to do this. So it's a longer term commitment to you, Joey? I mean, I think glass is a great concept. I, I think we need to do everything we can. It's just whether the timing is right, right now, because we already have a process to complete our recycling plan. We can include this in it and include it in the building that, you know, we're planning, you know, have its own little room or whatever. I don't know what that looks like right now, but happy to have, you know, conversation with anybody. But I just don't know that it's gonna happen tomorrow.
Oh, well, I'm, I'm not looking for it to happen tomorrow. It's been three years that, you know, since we've done anything at the recycle cent, you know, since the recycle center moved or so. So, you know, I'm looking at long range. I understand everything takes time. And, but what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is I think it's a, a, a good alternative to what we have now. I, I didn't know about Scott's plan that he spoke about with Doug, with Mr. Miller. But, you know, this is what I was coming here for and I spoke about it a month ago. And so, yeah, it's six feet, you know, it takes up, this small one takes a footprint of, of fifty-two and a half inches by seventy-two inches. And it's six feet tall or something like seventy and a half inches tall. So it's not a very big one, but this would be, I think this particular model would be good for someone like David Carey. You know, just put it somewhere.
Yep, that's what's kind of rolling in the back of my mind, Joey, is the fact that you're pretty excited about this. Have you thought about maybe doing something on the side yourself? Buying this machine and doing this yourself?
Actually, I, I, you know, it crossed my mind, but I don't know that I have a, a place to do it. I don't have a place to do it.
And we don't, we don't have a place right now either.
Right.
I think Sheri is correct. I think we're getting the cart in front of the horse. What I would like to do is keep this in the back of our mind and then once we get a facility where we can hold this, house this, then I think, yeah, we should look at it.
And, and that's why I request you speak with Cindy Andella now while you're planning for the future. So possibly you could incorporate this into the plan. Think about it being in the plan and possibly incorporating in that plan. I know the public would like it. The public would love it because they're always complaining, "I have to take my glass." "I have to take my glass to Boise or, you know, I got no place, I hate it going into the landfill. I gotta take, put it in the garbage." I mean, I know I have.
Okay.
So thanks very much for your time. I appreciate you listening.
You bet. Thanks for your energy.
You bet. I, thank you. I just wanted to give you food for thought.
The one, the one, before we leave it here, we want to follow up with this by at least listening to a presentation.
Thank you.
Someday. And I think that's plausible for me. I mean, if we could get it scheduled on our agenda, the issue I have is we can't really decide to do anything for at least another year until we get a roof and some snow protection.
I'm asking for that. I am asking just for Cindy Andella to be able to answer questions that you might have, you know, that, that might come up between now and then. I'd kind of like for Meredith Todd to be in on this Zoom call, you know, and Cindy, for Cindy.
What's your agenda look like?
August fifteenth would be the soonest. At that time, at, at 2:00 PM, August first, August eighth, they're already scheduled.
How about, is that a Monday? Because Mondays work good, 2:00 PM works good mountain time for her. Great.
August fifteenth is a Monday.
Great.
Sorry, you can't go?
Would you have a Zoom call? Can you get in on Zoom?
What about the next Monday? What about the, what would that be? Twenty-second? You back then? What's twenty-second look like, Doug?
August twenty-second at 2:00 PM would work.
We'll shoot for August twenty-second at 2:00 PM.
Thank you so much.
And get ahold of them and with Doug and get it all scheduled and the Zoom call and all that.
That's fantastic. I am so excited about it. And I'd really love for Jeff McFadden to be here because he seemed really interested.
Yeah, we got a pretty good email from Jeff on the last time we tried this.
Oh, you did?
And it was, I think it was too big of particles.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Mixed with pavement and the whole road came apart.
He said it was terrible. It was not a good experiment, but it was a good learning experience.
Yeah. Well, it's interesting because you grind it, you can use it under a road bike. So you're either buried in the landfill or you're buried under a road, but it's still getting buried, one or the other.
Right. And I heard it stunk too.
Well, it can if it's not washed out. That's part of it is people have to wash them out.
Yeah, and I think, I thought I saw something in the literature that says cleans debris and washes. I don't know how that's occurred.
That might be a challenge.
But anyway, that's, that's another thing, the twenty-second, we can discuss.
Okay, thanks, Joey.
Joey, the other phone call you should make in the meantime is to the Tamarack Mill because they're gonna buy a tub grinder to grind woody debris.
Tamarack Mill?
Yes. And it is a change of a grate to grate, to grind glass. So they may be interested in something. So I would contact them and have that conversation.
Okay, we gotta move on. We are almost out of time for the day. So our next, next is an agenda item is an action item and we're going to go into the executive session. Prowd Code seventy-four, two oh six, one B for an evaluation. I need that motion, please.
So moved.
Have a second?
A second.
Who did a second by roll call, please?
Bob and I.
Ellen?
As Rick I, Doug will be in at four forty-one.